Good evening. I call the order this July 20th, work session of the Morrisville Town Council. We welcome everyone who's watching virtually. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson will be participating remotely tonight. Councilmember Fender will be arriving momentarily. At this time, having called to order, I'd like to recognize Town Clerk Smith for a quick item. About the ballots.
Okay, I think most of you already put your ballots, but I did put an entire, if you complete your ballot, I put your entire ballot packet after your advocacy to your ballot permit. If you didn't complete your ballot, it's a mandatory. I put a PZD ballot and senior advisor to your ballot, so you can take your votes ballots tonight instead of electronic. So you should be, I think everyone here has given me a ballot or their work on that, so I think we're good.
Okay, and that's for appointments to committees, and you'll be bringing that information back to us next Tuesday at a regular meeting for a vote. Okay, excellent. We're moving on to number, item number two, discussion items. First item is 2A, a town council roundtable. We haven't done this in a little while, so generally what we do, well, at your seat, you also have a refresher of what we've been doing up to now. I recognize Town Manager Page to say anything about that she might want to say and anything else about process.
Thank you, and if I miss anything, Erin can help. So Erin has been the staff member that's been keeping track of both the roundtable and what has become some brainstorming discussions that was just sort of a step removed from roundtable. We've been keeping track of that. The last time council actually held a roundtable that there were items was in October. We had one slated for an agenda in March that did not occur. So what we did since then a while is we updated and modified the tracking tool a little bit. We dropped the Excel spreadsheet file into your council manager, or council member access on the network, that you can see all the things that have been completed in the past or that have been also incorporated into our ongoing activities. That just allows you to focus on the ones that are still outstanding or pending. And we have updated those with some information that on what you have in front of you is green. This is sort of the most recent update. A number of these things actually do roll into some of our fiscal year 2022 work plan and strategic plan things. And then we're going to develop a process in the background just to be updating this, but bringing it back to you as we do roundtables on a more regular basis so that you can see those things as they come through. Erin and I talked about brainstorming, and I think our opinion is it's really not much difference in roundtable. If you want us to just incorporate it into one list or not, it's just, we don't have to decide that now. You can see the updates and let us know. We actually do have one scheduled for August as well, so that, and again, depending on how much time council wants to spend on this, you do know you have one coming back in August. There is one item, and it is on the second page. It's the last item, so when I say second page, the back page of the in-progress items. A prior council member talked about a first responders park that I think staff would just want to reassess council's interest in that. It also has been talked about at a council level in the past of somehow integrating with a veterans memorial that has also been discussed by council. That may be something we want to come back and talk about at the August roundtable that gives council a little bit of time to think about that. Can Erin or I answer any questions about our very small, I think we're pleased to say, list of outstanding roundtable items?
I have a quick question about that one you were just talking about. Do we have input back from the PR CAC about the integration?
So I think that is still on there. They indicated they could consider it at MCP or Shiloh. Beyond that, council has not talked about it any further.
Okay, because that's a different location than at the Indian Creek Trailhead, which we're thinking is the veterans' location, correct?
That is correct. And they indicated it also could be part of the veterans' memorial.
Okay. Any questions for Town Manager Page on this, or Ms. Hudson? Okay. Anything you want to add?
No, I don't see your ability for a few questions.
So just, I could a little bit of refresher about our process. It's supposed to be a quick, three-minute, I've got this interest, head nods or not, not an elaborate discussion, which candidly we fall into very quickly, that we debate all the merits. If council has questions about the item, those should probably be asked, but the goal is, do you want to have staff spend time on this or not? And then we're able to try to figure out how or where it incorporates into the other work you have us doing. And I think what council has done in the past is make sure everybody gets a shot for one before you add a second or a third. I've been asked this before, yes, this is all addition to workload for staff in many cases. That is often a question we get asked. Yes is usually the answer, but happy to explore those things to bring them back from council.
Okay, and just for process, how will we know if Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson wants to weigh in during this discussion?
If Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson makes the, notifies me through the teams, I can call upon her. I can inform you that she's.
Okay, just let me know. Sounds good, so as Town Manager Page mentioned, we usually each get an opportunity to do one. Then after everyone has a chance, we can go ahead and do another round. It might be actually faster if someone brings something up, and if someone has a problem with it coming back from staff with more information. That might be quicker than having to look around for head nods. Just someone put up your blue thing if you want to say not interested. So why don't we try that? So we'll start off with Councilmember Ralph.
So can I, can I, can, before we start, can we kind of put some parameters around this? How long are we going to go? We have other items on our agenda, and we have two closed sessions, so I don't know if we want to put a timestamp on this or just do one and two go-arounds and then stop. I'm just looking for feedback on that. I think we need to figure out a time when we're going to stop and move on with the rest of the agenda.
Okay, did staff time this out? And I think you mentioned 90 minutes was allotted for this?
It was on the rolling calendar as 90 minutes, but we did not timestamp this agenda. I think, I think my estimate, and Will, please weigh in, at least 30 minutes for Will, and that'll depend on council's questions. I do not think the closed session will take extensive amounts of time, 15 to 30 minutes.
So why don't we shoot for 60 minutes and see how that goes? Is that acceptable to everybody? And if we finish earlier, all the better. So it's all about really brief on your presentation. Let's get, do you have a problem with it or not? And let's keep it moving. Okay, would anyone like to go first?
I'll have the mayor for Tim go first.
Okay.
I think Councilmember Ralph is letting me go first because he and I came up with the same, the same item that we wanted to talk about. So as many of you know, the Morrisville Veterans Memorial is a nonprofit here in town that has been raising funds for the design and construction of a veterans' memorial. And council has already designated a spot over right behind us here at Indian Creek where the veterans' memorial can be constructed. Prior to COVID, the Morrisville Veterans Memorial was doing a great job of raising money, and of course, came to a screeching halt. So I would like staff, if council agrees, to look into whether or not it is feasible for us to help at least fund the design work or fund a portion of the design work so that the Morrisville Veterans Memorial can start moving ahead into their next phase of fundraising, which I think will be very successful. They're, they're thinking about raising, or selling rather, bricks, engraving bricks. And so anyhow, so my ask tonight is that we think about and look into whether we can help match them or give them some seed money to do the design work.
Okay, recognize Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Garamella, then Councilmember Rabadi.
Thank you, and I spoke to the mayor about this issue as well, and I was going to bring it up tonight. But one thing I would like to add to that, what the mayor for Tim said, is I'm in support of giving money from the town for the veteran memorial to kickstart it or either matching and providing funding. But one concern I think that we might want to address is because they're nonprofit status, and if we give money to one nonprofit, then we open up the door for others. So one thing I would like us to perhaps consider is would it be possible to somehow bring this in, you know, bring the veterans' project as a town or Morrisville project? We'd still add a veterans committee, but have a designated staff member or come within the parks and rec that could not take over the project, but really provide the infrastructure and everything, working with communications, to do the outreach and everything, just an idea. So that way, we wouldn't have to deal with the argument of, you know, would it be one nonprofit versus another? Just food for thought. I'm not trying to take away the credit from the committee. I just feel like having the town resource in mind, it may help.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
I, I think, think the same way because they have been trying, and we know we want it. So we don't have a policy. You can, it's like one of the comments here at the back is we don't have a policy on how to fund small businesses or even nonprofits in place, but the cause is beyond these small issues. I would strongly say club it up with the fire, first responders or something. Take it in as a town project and get it done, you know? That is easy than taking it as a nonprofit and then trying to, you know, do money. So they will stumble into issues every time. And if we want to see this successfully, have it in our master plan of parks and recs and multi-use, you know, for first responders and veterans, and get it out of the door. That's how I see it. It's quicker, faster than it will drag out if we go that way. And take their advice, keep that same committee. They have equal input into that, like, you know, TCL, we use the Church Street ground, but they are pretty vocal in how they run the pitch and the grounds about it. And that way, town has control, and they can, they don't have to answer, okay, why did you give that nonprofit or not? That's my two cents.
Okay, Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Yeah, I don't actually really understand why this isn't a town project. Like, is there something specific about a veterans' memorial that, where it requires individuals to privately fundraise for it? Like, why don't we just put one up?
So I can answer some of that.
It's history.
The short answer is, is that's the direction council, a prior council gave as they dedicate, and the town has supported the project by donation of the parcel of land, but challenged the, those interested in doing that to fundraise to, to move the project along. They took on that, that mission. They formed a nonprofit status, and again, it's been a chicken and egg kind of approach because they don't have a design to show people to help fundraise, and, and so that, that has challenged the efforts. Council has, over the past several years, gone back and forth about this. Some of the points that council members have made are, do need to be evaluated. Is limited to just giving money. So the, the way it happens is important that, that, I think I've heard enough of directions that's what council is indicating to start working on this.
I mean, I would be interested in developing it as part of, not necessarily a first responders park, but like, I mean, if we did a heroes' park, and there was a veterans' memorial, and a firefighters' memorial, and a police memorial, and maybe something about doctors or teachers, you know, they could, then they could donate to the town whatever they've collected. And then we could, I mean, it seems like we could move that along faster. That's just a thought.
I think, I think that now that the stormwater control measure is in place, that was always, that was also a delay, is, is the stormwater control measure was abutting the parcel and making sure that there was enough land there to do that. So, so there is some work that needs to be done to evaluate a site. I think a decision about heroes and veterans and first responders is, is a follow if, if you're looking for mechanisms to help advance the project in the first place. That would be the work item that council would be working, or staff would be working on.
Councilmember Fender, please.
It's been a while since I talked to Bob and others about the memorial, but I thought they did have a design started.
In the concept.
And how much was the cost of what they thought, what they were looking at? How much did they think they needed to raise?
I, I don't recall that there was ever a determination of the cost. I think based on comparable things that we might know about. You're probably talking 20 to 25,000 dollars.
Oh, okay. I didn't know whether it was 50,000 or 100,000.
For the design, I think it would be, so the cost is going to be influenced by what they want there.
Right.
If you, if you recollect the concept, it is mostly natural brick pavers, trees, benches. That wouldn't be, it's not buildings type of thing that I think might make it a little bit more simple. But you, we, there would have to be surveying, there'd have to be, you know, geotext stuff, all of that. It, it goes kaching, kaching pretty quickly.
Okay.
Did you have something to follow up on? I see your thing up.
No, I'm thinking.
Okay, I believe you have enough to bring something back, the initial ask, the funding for the design.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please go ahead.
Yeah, we're working out the kinks on raising hands and getting stuff, but I wanted to comment on this. I am a strong supporter that we needed to make this a town project for a while. I want to make sure that the nonprofit status of the veterans' memorial foundation still has the ability to collect, fundraise, and contribute to a memorial, whether it's a heroes' memorial, like, was suggested, or if it's a veterans-only memorial. But I, I think that we need to take this under the jurisdiction of the town. We have already invested in this project through the land donation, although now the land that we had originally designated is no longer necessarily a viable area. And to answer Councilmember Fender's question about cost, because we don't have that design, and we don't have the land that was originally intended, the cost really is a question. But originally, when we were doing some groundwork, it was between 100 and 200,000 dollars. So that's why the council felt that there needed to be a nonprofit component to the project because the cost was a significant one, and there are opportunities for grants when a nonprofit is involved. So I hope that adds a little more clarity and also my support. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone had a chance to weigh in. As the initiator of this one tonight, Mayor Portem.
So I, I appreciate everyone's support. I think, I think staff can, can help us come up with the right way to move forward. I just want to make sure and clarify one more time more that we are still looking at the same location that we have always talked about at Indian Creek. Is that correct?
That has not changed. I, I think there were concerns as the stormwater control measure got bigger and bigger that there would not be adequate land, but I think we do think that there is adequate land. It'll, it'll depend on what gets designed, but, but that has not changed.
Okay, and, and also, just to, to be really clear, the town has not given land to the Morrisville Veterans Memorial nonprofit. We have just designated the property to where the memorial would be constructed. It would still be a town asset that we would maintain over time. So we do have some, some significant investment moving forward in this project.
Yes, Mayor Portem Johnson is correct. The, the technical transaction was not the here is the land. It was the reserving of this town land for this purpose. So it is town land, and I think there was the intention that the town would play a role in care and maintenance. I think that has always been the case.
Yeah, just, I want to make that clear for those that may just be coming into this topic now and not followed it over many years, quite frankly. This is significant number of years we've talked about this project, so thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Yes, please.
So if I could sort of tack on to that conversation, and I'll refer you back to the brainstorming. There's been talk about nonprofit support from town council before. And as I mentioned, we can't just give money to nonprofits. That, that's a conversation I've had with Frank. We're restricted in how we can use our money. But there, and, and we've talked about the fact that the Morrisville Community Fund does exist for these, those purposes. We are, we are more recently getting some requests from, I'll call them nonprofits, that we may want to consider that, that would provide more connection with some of the members of our community, which is, I'll call it, use of our space. Example is some of the cultural events we want to provide, but that are being provided by outside organizations, groups like Girl Scouts or Boy Scouts that may want to, to meet in our facilities. And we have this sort of as a plan to work on it, but I'd sort of like to see if I can have head nods from council of you're willing to support some defined way of allowing people to use some of our facilities at no charge based on some criteria that we still need to develop. As Councilmember Ralph mentioned, they will line up at the door. So we have to have some policies to, to define how we're going to work with groups that may make those requests. But, but we do get a lot of those requests.
I would support that, especially if there's some policy and it's just staff decisions, so it's not the council making those decisions. So I'd definitely support that. Head nods or weighing in, Mayor Portem?
I just need to, I, I know we're not going, we shouldn't get into the details. I, I would look forward to discussing this furthermore, but if there's going to be significant expense by the town, so maybe that's one of the criteria moving forward. I think that needs to be analyzed, discussed, and that would be my only concern. And I would, I work with nonprofits, and we use facilities all across the triangle. And some of it is at a, at a reduced fee, but when it comes to staff time, we are responsible for covering staff time. So that would, I, I don't see that as being anything that's out of the ordinary when it comes to nonprofits, but anyhow, that's just.
Councilmember Garamella?
Yeah, I, I think that my only problem where I see is how many hours, like, you know, is it morning, like, you know, eight to five? Or, you know, then obviously, if you have to open up the facility, then if you're given free, but you had to pay for the staff to man that, then it automatically becomes an expense to the town. So, and also, I like the library rule, I think, where they have, you cannot go more than one hour or something, like, you know, and quick one, do it and out. That would be kind of work well, and during the business hours, they really want to meet, and they are part of, there has to be a connection of, if a troop is there, it is Marshall-based, and the roots of Marshall has to be there. I don't want someone out of town coming and saying that they want to book our stuff. So that's some criteria that you can come up with.
Did you see the head nods you needed to move forward?
We'll work on this. You've not mentioned anything that we have recognized would need to get addressed. Thank you.
Councilmember Ralph?
I'm good, I'm ready for my, I'm ready for my roundtable, whatever.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next roundtable item now. Councilmember Ralph?
Thank you, mayor. Okay, so I had two that I have recommendations for Park and Rec, but I'll just pick one, and if we have time, I'll come to the second one. I would like us, we've had a very successful Juneteenth celebration, and I want to thank Councilmember Rabadi for bringing that idea to the table last year. The other idea I have is following on what Apex has done, I'm having a sort of a pride, in order, in honor of Pride Month, a pride celebration or parade where we could, you know, have a gathering in person for, you know, at a park, and maybe a program where we can have speakers come and talk about LGBT community, LGBT policies, I mean, policies that are favorable to this community. And it's just an idea as we, you know, are promoting, you know, strategic plan that we're, one of our goals is that we're an inclusive community, living in, you know, livable and inclusive neighborhoods. I think this would go a long way, and it would be in parlay with kind of the, so I just need head nods of, you know, could we have staff explore something like this? Even if it's something small, not that big, just something to get started.
Just clarify, would that be in June also?
Well, it might be hard to do too. It would be preferable to have in June because it's Pride Month, but maybe we could do it in May or sometime after, I don't know.
Okay. Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that around, I forget, around last year, I forget exactly what happened, but it resulted in a bunch of local communities actually putting LGBTQIA+ nondiscrimination ordinances on their books. Count, former Councilmember Schlink talked about it at our last meeting, and I think that those two things really could go hand in hand and would be, I just think would be very positive for our town.
Okay. So those are two separate things. First, does anyone have an issue with staff investigating a pride event similar to the Juneteenth to be determined when it would be appropriate? Okay, seems like everyone's okay with that. Good, good?
Good.
Okay, as a follow-on, sort of, we'll move into yours, which is almost a separate roundtable item.
Okay, oh, sorry.
About formal resolution. No, no, that's fine. It's a good transition. Does anyone have a problem with staff bringing back the concept of a resolution? Or is it an ordinance, actually?
An ordinance, yeah.
So it's a little more formal?
Yes, and I think that Apex in Holly Springs, I can't remember who else did it. But I do think we're a little late to, yeah, I think we're a little late to the party there, frankly.
So a number of other towns have done that. We're not committing to it right now, but just giving staff the direction to bring something back for our consideration. Does anyone have an issue with that? Okay, that sounds like something we'd like to move forward with for staff? Good, okay. Anyone have any other roundtable issues, items that they'd like to bring up at this time?
I do.
Okay.
I, so Steve was talking about the Juneteenth celebration, and one of the things that happened there was that Esther stood up and talked about the Shiloh, the, the free people of color community that eventually became Shiloh, the Shiloh community. And I thought that that was a piece of our town's history that I did not know. And I thought that what would be, what would be good is if maybe along the Greenway somewhere or along, I don't know, somewhere, somewhere where it'd be seen by a lot of people, somewhere very public, where you wouldn't have to know about it to come across it. It would be good to do something to honor that history, like maybe, like maybe put the story in different stages along the Greenway, or, I don't know, something that, it just, it just seemed like that's such a meaningful piece of our town's history, that it would be cool to, to get it out there more.
So that actually exists already? So it sounds like I need to get it to you, and you need to promote better. It does exist.
Okay, where is it?
It actually starts right out here in front of Town Hall and goes down Church Street all the way to the old tobacco bar.
Okay, then that doesn't count as a roundtable item because.
No, 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 no.
So I think we, we call it the Church Street walking loop, and it has QR codes on the sides for those who are interested.
All right, that's my bad, I did not know that, okay.
No, it's, it's been a few years, so that's a good thing to make sure that everyone's still aware of that and to re-promote it, so that's wonderful. I'd like to. I'd like to share an item. We were talking about nonprofits and funding more as an in-kind. I really think that it would go a long way to show our support for our greater community if we were actually to give some financial funding to Dorcas Ministries, who does a lot of good work for Apex Carey in Morrisville. I am aware that Apex does donate directly to them for Apex residents. So it can be directed directly to people within the community. We're doing, I think, a really good job of making sure that people are safe and sound when they go to sleep, and our roads are getting there and our parks and rec. But about the clothing and the feeding, they're doing a really heavy lift for a lot of our community. And I think that they could use our help as a nonprofit. And I think that they're well-respected. And it would be up to the council to decide how much, if we were gonna do any. But it seems like a good starting point would be $1 per capita as a way to think about it. So approximately $30,000 a year, which is tax dollars of everyone, but it's serving those most in need in our community. So I'd love to hear people's thoughts about that. Councilmember Garamella?
Yeah, I meant to say, this is, I like Dorcas Ministries and they do a great job. But where it gets into a slippery slope is where do you hit which is a good nonprofit, which is not a, an other nonprofits? Like, ETSNC has collected more than $100,000 on their own, and they have given more than 50,000 meals, you know, of, you know, that serves the community and all of you have gone there and given it. Then, how do you quantify it? And, and that becomes a very slippery slope for me. Like, you're picking one and leaving others. You know, in a Shiloh community, you might be doing the same thing. Then it becomes a very, very catchy point, you know, why one and leaving the others. So, so that's my biggest fear. When we don't have a good policy in place about handling these things, and that was one of the reasons even the Veterans Memorial. You go that route, there is no, that's a whole flight gate there. So my fear is, the intent is right to, to do, but we don't know what the caveats are after doing it. Who all will come? And then they start comparing it. So that, that's my fear with that.
Okay. Councilmember Robati, please.
So what I think is that, the key to, to me, the key in what Satish just said is that outside of a policy, it's not a good idea to, to give to a certain nonprofit. But I think that we could, we could develop a policy for nonprofit giving if we want. And I think in, in any kind of thing like that, that would be the first step to me is to, is to get a policy in place that governs it to avoid that kind of, the kind of issues that Satish is talking about. So I think maybe the direction for staff would be to put some policy language together around it.
Okay. I would amend mine instead of a direct in order to have a policy in place. And we've talked about this before, but we haven't given, I guess, clear enough direction to have something brought back to us. Can we ask staff to go ahead and present a policy that would allow us to directly fund some nonprofits? Mayor Protam?
So, no, I don't think I would, what you just said, I don't think that's what, I, I would not ask them to go forward and create a policy to give money to nonprofits. I, I'm not ready to go that far, and I'm with Satish. And, and so, you know, I, I'm, I head up two nonprofits right now that I'm looking for money all the time. So I would, I would love to be able to ask the town to donate to, to both of them. But I, I think, instead, I think what might be to take a step back from that and just say, why don't we look at the, the options there are as a town, as a, and as a council to support these nonprofits? And how we can help them achieve their goals? I, I, I think that's the direction I, I might ask staff to help us with at this point. I'm, I'm not sure that I could commit to do much more than that.
Do you mean something like running a town food drive or something like that? Or like, what kind of things are you talking about?
So, so I would, there are towns that hold events where they raise money during the event. And the, the whole idea of that event is that that money and the profit that is raised then goes towards nonprofits in the community. So it's not, it's not taxpayers' money that is used, but it's actually an event to raise money that in turn then supports nonprofits. That's one option. It doesn't have to be that we use taxpayers' money. And just so you know, I think Dorcas Ministries is, is an absolutely fantastic organization. They are, they do a tremendous amount of work, not only here in Morrisville, but across the Triangle. I, I know firsthand the amount of work that they do in this community and how beneficial they have been to many of our residents. So I've no doubt that they are a worthy organization. That has nothing to do with, with my comments. They're not the only one, as Satish, as councilmember Garamella said, they're not the only one that does tremendous amount of work. Kiran, Kiran does a tremendous amount of work here in our community. And I would tell you maybe even have a bigger reach in, to our residents. So, you know, it doesn't stop with one organization. That's true.
Okay, yeah, I believe that there's lots of opportunities to help and to be part of the solution. We talked about public-private partnerships. I think those also apply to nonprofit organizations who already have the structure and foundation in place to serve our Morrisville residents. So I think you've mentioned a number of good organizations, as did Satish, I mean, councilmember Garamella. And I'm just searching for a way for us as a council and thereby representing our residents who also want to help out those organizations in a more direct manner. So if, okay, councilmember Garamella?
I, I think, you know, all are good points, but like all these AT&amp;T, GSK, like they have these companies which they are tied to the nonprofits, right? So if we have a list, like you're saying Kiran, or ETSNC, or Dorcas, that these are our partners, you know, ship nonprofits that we work with, our Marshall Community Fund, as a matter of fact, or TCL. So they get some kind of a tent or something, you know, on our events where they can come and, you know, project it at no cost. That would help to raise awareness, is not just giving money. Like as Alyssa said, Kiran, the amount of help and work that they do for domestic violence in the South Asian population, that's not something they go and put it out in the community. But that awareness that is there, you know, Dorcas Ministry, people really know the, who are really hungry, the value of Dorcas and, and those kind of things. So if we work as collectively, say, we have like 15 nonprofits, and there has to be some vetting that the staff can do. You have to have this good standing and all these things. And the Communication Department can basically help to promote some of the events that it is kind of, we're integrated as part of it. Like we do with TCL, if there is an event, like their games and all that, we are kind of collaborated, but, you know, they are, they're own entities that they're doing. They're paying for the fields and everything, but it is a collaboration. So that would, I would say, like, would be a good segue, how we can direct staff that council wants to do it.
Mayor Page?
And I'm not trying to influence this conversation, but religious organizations may be an additional complicating issue that needs to get addressed as a subset of nonprofits. But that may also have to be evaluated.
Okay. Councilmember Rowan?
There are, I, I, I am fine with us being open to considering potentially down the road policies of how we could establish better public-private partnerships to help nonprofits. I think there are models in place that we can look at, although they're much larger than us. Wake County has a very good process. I've been to the meetings where there's an application process where nonprofits apply for funding. Of course, they're much larger than us, but there could be something like that, something thought out and methodical that nonprofits, whether they're in Morrisville or, you know, Dorcas, even though they're not in Morrisville, local profits can come that are working with Morrisville to go through a formal process. And I don't know whether they're, they, they've got policies in Wake County to do that, but they do it every year and people come in and present, and then they allocate funding. And then how, what's the limit? How much would it be, you know, because we have a limited amount of resources. So we don't know how much of the money in the budget we would allocate. But maybe if we did have a policy that we could say, you know, $100 or $50,000 is gonna be for like nonprofits, and then every year there's a application process. So we can look at something like that.
So I think maybe a learn-as-you-go, but I think that there is interest in creating more robust partnership opportunities, whether or not that includes direct financial funding or supporting their events. I think there is support for us, from this council to ask staff to bring us back some options towards those things. Would everyone agree? Can I get head nods on that sort of general direction that's not very specific? Is that enough or is that too vague for you?
I think I understand the context of the conversation.
Okay. Thank you very much. I keep on looking over at the town clerk to see if councilmember Scott Johnson wants to weigh in on anything. Nothing as of yet. Does anyone else have any things that they'd like to bring up at this time?
I have one more, if council would allow me to bring it up or I can wait.
Just looking to see if anyone who hasn't brought one up.
Okay, sorry. Mine's real quick, but go ahead. Councilmember.
No, mine's, go ahead.
There you go.
Let's have councilmember Rowan go, and then we'll go councilmember Robati, and then I have another one.
Well, this is an easy, this is a, just as a follow-up to the success we had at Juneteenth with lectures, you know, with speakers about Shiloh. I would like us, the staff, to explore or look at returning to some kind of a lecture series in Morrisville like we used to have. We had some interesting, you know, lectures with Ernest Dollar and other historians. Maybe we would pick an evening or night where they would come to Town Hall and deliver a lecture. Eventually, you know, as we look at Town Center and stuff, I think this is a good way to begin. I would even look as an anchor, being like a history museum. We don't, I think, even though I come and read that stuff every now and then and, and watch the videos, still, we don't really have, I don't see us, you know, that's a great beginning to having a history museum, but that's another conversation. But initially, to get started, I think having a lecture series would be really good because I think it really can help us with our brand and, you know. So that's what my ask is, is for us to look at establishing a lecture series.
If I can interject, is that something that would be good for the Parks and Rec Cultural Resources Committee to do? Is that kind of your ask to sort of give the general direction that we'd like to see something come up from there? Or do you want it to initiate here?
Well, I don't know what, normally the process is if, if staff thinks it's a good idea, could they, would, would, could they circulate that idea back to the Resource and Cultural Committee? And say, you know, I mean, I'm fine with it starting either way. What, what do we think is the best way to, to begin?
So I'd ask for clarification on what the lecture series is about because that will influence where we should align staff to evaluate it.
Initially, I would like the, this initial lecture series to be about the history of Morrisville. Starting, you know, focusing on Civil War history, Black history. Eventually, lectures could also range from the changing demographics of the town, like the founding of the Hindu Society in North Carolina, sort of the history of that story. And, you know, the, the migration of many South Asians and, you know, Indian immigrants to the area. There could be some lectures on that. I mean, so something about the history of Morrisville, its evolution, you know, that kind of stuff.
Can I ask, recognize councilmember Robati?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay.
Was I, yes, sorry.
I, I would also add in, like, one item might be railroad history and how it's affected the town. So there, there's lots of different ways to come at what has made Morrisville, Morrisville. Councilmember Fender?
I would just say that I think it would be valuable to go past or, you know, before the Civil War, because this area didn't, I mean, there's history there here before the Civil War, even going back to, you know, Native American communities that could have been in that area.
Okay, councilmember Robati?
This could also be a youth outreach effort because there's, there are, I, I know specifically about Girl Scout badges at every level relating to the history of the town where you live. And I'm sure there are Boy Scout badges for the same thing. So, you know, this is, I mean, this would benefit people on a lot of different levels.
Okay. Did you want to go again? So can I see general head nods from everyone to direct staff to see what next steps would be? Whether it should circle back to Parks and Rec Committee or if they think they can just get it going? Kind of seeing small head nods.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
How big a head nod do you need?
How big a head?
Big head nods, okay. Okay.
I have one more, just kidding.
Good.
You got a big head.
Councilmember Robati?
Yeah, I think that we should work with, oh, did you mean like my turn or?
Yes, that's what I meant.
I think that we should explore getting a set of beehives at the Crabtree Creek Nature Park. Bees are good for the environment and they're frankly fascinating also. And there are a number of companies, I know one is called Bee Downtown, but there's, I'm sure there are others, that will put in the hives, tend the hives, do programming around the hives like for kids and on Saturdays. And I think that would be a really nice addition to the nature park. So I would just, you know, just like staff to reach out to somebody, have a conversation and see if that's possible.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
Who will be responsible if the bee stings a horse in there?
Well, if you stay away from the beehives, Satish, you won't get stung.
If I may, we, we are, we do have a work plan item about just reviewing our code of ordinances. We have no bee regulations. Bee regulations that do exist are Wake County really designed for rural areas. We have issues. We have issues on Town Hall Drive with beehives in one of our neighborhoods. So we are looking at bee ordinances. But, but we already have a problem area with bees in town because there's no ordinances and we have no enforcement activity. You're talking about a structured thing, so just wanted to get in. We're working on evaluating, bringing forward some regulations related to bees, as it were.
Okay, Mayor Protam Johnson?
Yes, I, I just want to add to that, so you all know. A, a resident reached out to me about those beehives on Town Hall Drive because they walk up and downtown Town Hall Drive with young children, and it has become an issue. So, and I reached out to Martha a long time, well, not a long time ago, but a while back about that. So I think there are, you know, I, I think we just need to be careful. And I think Martha, as she indicated, Steph's looking into how to, how to set up some kind of policy around it.
Having said that, though, there's a difference between a person putting up bees in their backyard that may or may not know what they're doing. And like this, the way that I know about this organization is they do the beehives at Cisco. And to my knowledge, none has ever been stung with those hives, you know? Like, so I'm, I mean, I'm not talking about like getting swarms of bees to go crazy over town, just, you know, couple well-maintained beehives with people that know what they're doing and that can, you know, that can, I mean, actually might even be a source of help to us with a problem like that.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not, just see, that, that, just because we have this issue doesn't mean I'm not saying we should look at it elsewhere. And, but these people supposedly know what they're doing. They actually selling honey from, so, but anyhow. So I, I think it's important that we have some kind of policy around it.
Yeah, and they would be able to answer any questions about who'd be liable if somebody gets stung. Like, I don't know the answer, but, yeah, I'm sure they do.
So, councilmember Fender, please.
And I, I, there's also the, similar to like an All-American City or Tree City designation, there's also the Bee City USA designation that helps with giving guidance to develop and that bee ordinance. In addition.
Sustainability coordinator has that sort of a work plan.
Okay, good.
To evaluate that.
But then also helps with initiatives to just plant pollinator gardens and, and that kind of thing. And I would be very interested in, in that initiative, Morrisville looking at that.
As am I. I think, hopefully the Sustainability Coordinator is looking into different options, including Crabtree Nature Park towards that. And as was mentioned, that's pretty well into the future, but planning is happening now. So I'm not sure if there's a firm ask. Councilmember Garamella?
I just thought of one item. I'm just off the fly.
So the next item, okay. So trying to, I'm not sure where we landed on that one. I don't think we have a firm ask of staff at this time just to make sure that beehives are considered in Crabtree Nature Park as we move forward. And we look forward to hearing about the ordinance and the issues that we can try to address. Does that meet your needs at this time? Councilmember Robati?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilmember Garamella would like an item.
Yeah, I was just thinking based on other inputs. I see a lot of people, you know, have their own gardens. They grow a lot of stuff. And we have Farmers Market. The NC State Extension has their master garden program. But I, I see our Marshall Community Garden is there, but it's not that active where in a way that the education part of it. So if we can tie up as simple as with NC State on a Saturday morning or someone that, or someone from the Farmers Market, you know, like they can have a booth and kind of explain how, what grows at different seasons. That would help the community as a whole, you know, and that kind of will guide, so.
And that is a part of our agreement with the education garden. Their programming, obviously, couldn't really get started until they had the garden planted and then COVID hit. They have master gardeners through the NC State Extension that are involved with the education garden. I think it's just getting their program going again.
And that would be awesome because that's super helpful to all the residents.
Okay, so we got that one in place, okay. I had one other thing I wanted to bring up to the council. We have the sustainability program, which I feel is going really well with residents and some organizations. I was wondering if the council would be supportive of the idea of having more directed business outreach? Something along the lines of if we were to provide two litter grabbers and 12 plastic bags to any business who wanted one, would they commit to doing one hour a month of cleaning their road frontage and maybe their parking lots just to improve the aesthetics of Morrisville in general? Go to some organizations, gas stations, things like that, and it's kind of messy along aviation and airport. We could use a little help with cleaning those roads, especially since they're state roads that aren't really getting attention. So is that something that we'd be interested in having staff bring back? Just what the scope of that would be, how we could get it started, like the sustainability program? I mean, stewardship program started off small and it's growing. This would be also a small pilot program to see if there's interest from the business community. Does anyone have a problem with looking into that? Okay, that sounds like an idea that we'd like to hear a little bit more about. Did anyone else have any other items that they'd like to bring up? Mayor Pretend Johnson?
Yeah. I would, I'd like staff to bring back the the policy we have around our advisory committees and especially how it relates to social media. You know, we recently had, we had a, an issue with a committee member talking about other committee members on social media. And we really don't have anything specific in our policy, which was evident during this conversation. We don't have anything, it's very vague. Our policy is very vague. So I'd like to, if council's supportive, to ask staff to kind of revisit that and maybe add beef ups the wording around that. However, that may be how that wording comes out in the end to help us so that we don't have another situation like we just had and that we're really clear and upfront with committee members of how we expect them to, to work with each other. I guess that's the kindest way I can put it.
Yeah, I definitely support that. Setting expectations is really important. Councilmember Robati?
It's been my experience when I was a social media lead that the more definitive you make a policy, like the more you try to unvague it, the more loopholes you create in it. And it honestly would probably be a better direction to go in to say that all social media posts by members of advisory groups that relate to town business should be respectful, should be, shouldn't disclose private information and, you know, something like that, like, like a blanket statement. Should be respectful, should be professional. And that actually, I know it's sort of counterintuitive, but that actually gets you, that's actually a better policy in terms of if you can point to something and say that wasn't respectful and it wasn't professional, that's different than having, like you, if you can nitpick around a 200, you know, a 200 line policy, it's, it's easier to, it's easier to enforce a vaguer policy is what I'm saying. That's just something, I mean, that's just been my experience.
So could, um, would we be comfortable having staff bring us back a couple of options in that direction? Something maybe duplicative of the Town Council policy about social media, but actually adds some repercussions because we don't really have repercussions for us. But we have guidance, some of which is more vague, some of which is not. And then maybe also an alternative, which is a lot loose, not looser, but more generalized, as was suggested by Councilmember Robati, but would also have some kind of repercussions associated with it so that people would know what to expect if they were not respectful or something like that. Would that meet the needs of your ask, Mayor Pretend?
Yeah, I, you know, I think, I think there's many options and many directions we can go and I, I agree with Councilmember Robati. But I'd like staff to kind of take a stab at it and then we can, you know, I, I've, I've said this multiple times over the years. It is so easy to react to something than it is to create it. And that's why I greatly appreciate the work of our staff. They can bring us something to react to and then we can make it the way we are comfortable with. So yes, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, does anyone have an issue with staff bringing that back for us? Okay, seeing none?
And may I add on to this one as well? I had, I had this on my list as well. We, we do have, based on, on our more recent experience, have some modifications to do to that policy anyways, just to how to handle a process when something like this occurs and, and, and have something in place if unfortunately something would happen again. Would like to discuss with council perhaps for an interim period of time, also considering whether you would be willing to support some relaxation of some of our guidelines. And since I've been here, we periodically go through, I'll say peaks and valleys of lots of applicants and not enough applicants to fill our committees. And, and, and then attendance continues to be an issue. And I would offer, it's become more of an issue since we've put some guidelines in place than less. And I'm not really talking about COVID. I'm, I'm talking about committees that aren't able to meet month after month because they can't achieve a quorum. And that becomes frustrating to a committee and then it leads to people leaving committees. So, or people getting on a committee and finding they, they just can't make that commitment. Rather than resign, they don't show up. So it's holding them to a quorum they can't achieve. And then they can't do their business. So, and that's not one committee. There's one committee that is mostly affected by that, but it's not the only committee. All of their business comes to staff or council anyways, so when they're, when they're doing their business. But would council consider putting some failsafes in the policy to allow committees to meet with a minimum number of people versus having to have a quorum? Or, and maybe thinking about how we, we haven't been enforcing attendance procedures since COVID started. But as we, we've had that same issue even on virtual calls, that people are not attending.
I personally would support going forward with a fewer number during a meeting if you don't achieve the strict quorum, just to keep the ball moving and keeping the action items moving.
And we haven't done a lot of work yet, but, but we know it's, it's out there. Even with your appointments now, you're not going to seat full committees in some cases because we just didn't have enough applicants.
Mayor Pretend Johnson?
So I get, the ask is really to define a new quorum. Define, redefine the definition of quorum because you can't, you can't have a meeting with two people.
Well, I don't know the word technically redefine quorum, but we don't have to make it.
Come up with your new quorum.
And, and one thing I'd perhaps like you to think about, maybe when we bring this back, is one of the questions I've been asked is why 11? And I don't know that I can tell you that answer except for it's always been that way. Is it necessary for there to be 11? Is just a question I've been asked, maybe something for you to think about. We, we've done it consistently across our, our boards and committees. But it's, it's been asked, or we don't have boards anymore, but our committees. But, but just maybe something for you to think about how important that is for you as we would bring some other things back.
Okay. Councilmember Robati, please.
So I respectfully disagree that if attendance is a problem, that we relax the attendance policy, that relaxing the attendance policy is the answer. I think that maybe, you know, doing a better job of, I don't know what we do upfront to communicate with people what the requirements are, but I, I think that, you know, maybe something as simple as adding a question on the application like, can you be available for one meeting a month? I don't think one meeting a month is a huge ask. I just don't. And I think that honestly, if you can't make that minimum commitment, that possibly I mean, I think that's a minimal commitment, one meeting a month. I don't, I don't think that, I mean, we can change the quorum just because, you know, that will, just because that will solve the problem that because people are failing on the meetings, they can't get any work done. Like, that's fine, but I really think that maybe we need to start explaining to people that they have to show up for meetings before they get on the, on the advisory committee.
I have to say, I think we do do that and all of our meeting schedules are published for our committees. It's only when we're forming new committees that we allow them to have some say in what works for the group of the committee. And, and some of the smart city, which is the newest, they just can't meet the night. Or you do get in and find out that you, you don't, you don't have the time capacity for the commitment. That occurs sometimes and I think we all understand that. It just leaves the committee handicapped or you coming back and appointing. One of our bigger challenges is when even the, the staff liaisons or Eric or Aaron, when they don't even get a response to find out if there's an issue, what do we do? So we, again, we haven't been enforcing attendance. What Councilmember Robati at least is saying is enforce the attendance. And, and it's, we have a warning process and then they're removed from the committee that leaves the spot for someone else.
Yeah, there could be unintended consequences with relaxing things, so we just want to be careful as we go forward, I guess. But I think whatever the liaisons feel is going to best work to make the committees vibrant and successful, we'd love to hear that. And it sounds like this relaxation will help or at least be worth trying. So I think I see some head nods on that. Okay. Has anyone not given two? Because I have a couple. I have one more.
I'm trying.
I don't think that was implied. I had one quick one. I think it's really quick. The Morrisville Community Library reopening, very successful. Anything that we can do to support their efforts, I think is going to be really important. And this would be an ask not to fund story walks, but to have staff identify where in town a story, story walk would be appropriate. What, along which greenways or which roadways, like we have the Church Street Walking Loop, which is really nice. So a story walk is like that, but more compact. So there's maybe 20 pedestals or fewer. Each pedestal has a page from a children's book. Children reads that page, maybe skips to the next one, reads the next one. So there's parts around town, which I think would be wonderful for this and just be a matter of helping their library by identifying where they would be. And then we could collaborate with them about identifying funding for those, which might be a Rotary Club or any nonprofit reading organization. So this would be a first step to just identify where. Is that something that this council would support? One head nod and I see people thinking about it.
So what is the ask there? So I'm like, not able to understand.
Well, right now we don't know where in town it would be appropriate. For example, along our new Stonewater BMP on Town Hall Drive, that's not appropriate because it wasn't designed to have things along it. So that's a place where it can't be, although that would be great because it's close to the library. So what other areas would be?
Does library even have an interest in these kind of things?
The library is very interested in having story walks. They're doing it all over Wake County, but we don't have any in Morrisville yet. But there might be an opportunity, like behind Park West Village, we have a nice greenway there. That may be a place, but staff might say that, no, that's not appropriate because it's not built to support it. So we're not really sure how to move forward without knowing a little bit more information about what the town would allow.
For me, I'm hearing for the first time, so to say yes or no also for me is like kind of hard to like.
Well, this is just about getting more information back. We're not deciding per se. It's just a matter of
Okay.
exploring.
So two asks, exploring what it is, like, because I have no clue.
Okay.
And, and then the second is your locations, you're saying, define locations.
Right.
So I would go for the first one because I don't know what we are getting into for this second one. Like just saying, how does it work? You know, how does the funding work? And then if we are okay, then we can go to the next piece of where the greenways and other things. So exploring the greenways first is kind of counterintuitive.
Okay, because you're not familiar with the concept in general. I understand. Okay, thank you, sir. Mayor Pretend.
So has the library reached out to our staff, Martha? This sounds like it's the library's effort.
I've, I've not even heard of this program.
Do we even know if this library is, I, I, I think they need to make the step, quite frankly, before we do any. Why would, why would we do this work when we don't? I, I, I would, I'm with Satish. I think I want to make sure the library is even.
I can make that ask.
Yeah, okay. I would just, I would, I'm, I'm okay with that, but beyond that, I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what to say at this point.
Councilmember Robati?
Well, this is a program that's going on. I mean, it's not even just a Wake County program, but the, I mean, this has been, I know we had one in Princeton. Not when I was a little girl, but you know, like when, when my kids were little, there was one in Princeton already. And I would assume that since it's a Wake County program, every library would be interested, you know? I, I mean, we, yeah, you should reach out to them, I guess, if that's, I mean, if that's a thing that we all need to feel comfortable. But this is an established Wake County library program, so there's no, yeah, it's an established program.
So do we even know they have the staff to initiate the program? That's the kind of questions I'd like to know. I agree with you. It's a fabulous program and, but are they, I, I'd like, I'd like to hear from them before we talk about initiating any kind of workload for them. I, it just doesn't, if you reach out to them, Martha, that would make me feel better.
Okay, so I initiated this, so I'd revise my ask and just bring it back a little bit. And ask if, are we comfortable asking for staff to reach out to the library, see if that's something they're interested in? What next steps would be from their perspective, how we could assist?
So can I add on to that? I think I would, the ask should not be about a specific program. It should be more about, and I know you've had these conversations before. You know, we're here for you. Let us, you know, we want to work with you. We want to partner with you on whatever programming you come up with. That should be the conversation. That should be the conversation. Because it, it should not be just related to one program. It should be related to everything that they're doing. They're a very important part of our community and integral to, to our community. So I would, I would, I would ask that that be the, the message.
To include story walk.
To include all, that, that we are here for them with all their programming needs and, and would like to partner with them, whatever that is. I mean, there might be other programs that they're interested in doing, you know, we have a very diverse and different community than other communities here in the triangle. For all I know, and I've not talked with them lately, for all I know, they're trying to do some very special international kind of programming. And I would, I would think we would all want to be a part of that and help in those efforts. So, you know, they might be doing something very specific for, for Morrisville and that, that, that's just my concern about the messaging.
Yeah, and we appreciate they were actually at Juneteenth and talking about the library and stuff. So those were the ones that I had to bring up. Does anyone else have anything that they'd like to bring up on roundtable? We're just over an hour, but if people are interested, Mayor Pretend.
I've got one more, and it's more of a question, Martha, more than to add, but didn't we, because I didn't see it on the list. Haven't we talked in the past about, I, I know we've talked in general about offering or discussing how to incorporate more artwork around the community? But I also would, I want to make sure, you know, and if council's agreeable, that, that, that murals are a part of that conversation. There are some very specific.
I think that's a brainstorming.
Was it? Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss it then?
Yes, it, it was, it was really related to culture and resources program, but creating sense of place, history, arts, Pew House, the, I would incorporate it in that kind of.
Okay, and does it say murals? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm still not finding it, but, oh, I found it, okay.
Murals got talked about in a different context, but I would incorporate that into a discussion of public art.
Okay, I, murals needs to be a part of this because we have some really unique opportunities here in town, some, some really terrific locations that could be fabulous for some beautiful mural work. And I don't want to lose that opportunity. And besides, the locations I'm thinking of are, are not attractive and they need help. So if we can make sure that that's not lost in, in what we are doing, that would be fantastic. And we have some, some really talented.
Local artists?
I'm sorry?
Local artists?
Yeah, we have some very talented students in our community that I would love to see them have the opportunity and an outlet to highlight their work. You know, whether it's some kind of like a, you know, and of course, the, the locations I'm looking, I'm thinking about are not, are not really ours. We need partners to agree to this, but that, that, that can easily be accomplished. But, you know, even if we had some kind of contests where, you know, our, our local students have the opportunity to, 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 you know, present their work and then it, you know, something's chosen and it goes up, I, I think that would be fabulous, but.
I think, Martha, like last year or a year before, I had forwarded email. C. Hodgson had sent me an email, like United Arts has funding opportunities to do murals. And they basically fund in your town, you know, for locations and it's part of their program that they were working. And the locations had to be picked up, kind of a thing. So there's.
Not totally accurate.
Or something, I don't know, whatever.
There's, there's town costs as well. It's not free money. And, and as you may remember from Michelle, there's some leaps and challenges for mural and content and freedom of expression as well that we need to get work through. Not saying it's a bad thing, just saying that there are many layers to the evaluation.
Yeah, our sign consultant made that pretty clear, that there has to be some kind of program. Councilmember Robati?
Yeah, I don't think it's going to come as a shock to anybody that I'm for putting a mural on anything that's standing still. But one thing is that it, there's a huge difference between a student designing a mural and getting that on the side of a building. So what we might want to consider is some type of artist in residence program that would help the students to realize their, you know, like what they drew and what they won the contest with and how that goes on a building. It's just one idea of how to make that as successful as possible.
Okay.
You can start with my house, you can slap a mural right on that thing.
I see support for engaging murals and pursuing that art brainstorming. Thank you. Seeing nothing else at this time, we can move on, I think, to the next item on our agenda. And then we'll take a break after that.
Before, before we have, I have two.
Of course.
Items I'd like to talk to council, but I don't know where it fits, so maybe.
Now's a perfect time.
Right here?
Sure.
The first is, is we've been in communication with the town of Cary for a long awaited joint meeting. And, and so the date I've been provided as one that works for town of Cary is September 30th. It is a Thursday, it is a Thursday the same week as a council meeting. It is the only option I've been provided. So I, I, I want to make that clear. And if we do not agree to this day, it would likely be several more months. And we haven't worked out the logistics. It was framed to be more social, get to know each other, but there are a few topics that are of mutual interest to be talked about. I'm really looking for head nods that council would commit to what would really be another meeting that week. And it's far enough in advance, hopefully, that.
A meeting or like, like in the past we have done as a dinner or some?
I would expect it, we would, I, I, I believe that they might be comfortable with getting together for a dinner and then chat about mutual interest. It's, it's not supposed to be work and presentations by staff, which is what it has turned into often. It is for the council elected officials to get together with each other.
Is everyone in the council involved? I can't remember, did we select?
Sorry.
Everyone?
People to represent us with that meeting or is it?
We have not done that for several years.
What time would it start?
I would guess six or 6:30.
As a workday. There is a little hiccup there in that the East Meets West Festival for this year by the Morrisville Innovation Foundation, that's the kickoff evening. So that's starting on the 30th of September. So I think we probably, many of us would probably like to be involved in that as a cultural event that has been really strongly recognized in the past and in support of the chamber. Is it possible this could be a lunch meeting on that 30th?
I do not know.
It's hard for me to.
That would be hard, especially on Thursday for me.
When was the last time we met, Martha? It's been.
Two years?
Yeah. It's, yeah, it was before the pandemic.
Oh, yeah, not since Anna and I have been in the council. We've never met.
Yeah. We've never seen each other.
That's right, that's right. That was the last, that was the last.
It was 2018.
Wow.
No. I have one, one, sorry, go ahead.
I do, I, 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 I don't have all the information of, I, I know there is a kickoff, but there's also 10 days of the East Meets West Festival this time. I, I, that, that's all I really know.
Right. Both those things are true.
I was going to say, I, I'm fine with moving forward with the meeting on the 30th. Just knowing how difficult, even in the past, pre-pandemic, it was to hold those meetings. You know, we're talking, I think, Martha, we're talking the spring of next year if we don't do it in September.
Probably needs, I mean, I don't know if there's a way we can marry the two. I, I need to look at that and potentially talk to Linda, but that's, I, I don't know that, but that's an idea.
Yeah, depending on the location, if we could have an hour with them and then step outside to the event or something, that's a great compromise solution, if you could look into that. But if the 30th is the only day, the 30th is the only day, unfortunately.
We could have dinner at Fireside Grill, someplace there.
So, so we'll push it back to staff, but say that the 30th, we'd rather meet the 30th than have to wait till the spring. Is that agreeable?
Yes, I just, I mean, my, I'm fine with meeting them for dinner at a restaurant, but I also think that we've got lots of important topics to talk to them about. And so it's hard in a restaurant setting to have a work meeting. I, I mean, I would prefer, if possible, we could have a social gathering and then a meeting either in a chamber or something like that.
At St. George.
Yeah, they, they need to come to the All-American City, so. Oh, court advantage.
I have September 30th is a kickoff event featuring food truck, radio, stage performances and/or trivia. The location and time, at least here, is still TBD.
Right. Okay.
Just food for thought, it'll be structured.
Move forward with that as you're able.
Okay. The other thing that we talked about with council, who was very excited when this got mentioned, was a, a citizens' police academy for council members. So we have worked behind the scenes a little bit. We have looked at the regular curriculum, done a little bit of modification to it to, to work, I'll say. We can get this done for you in three, four-hour sessions on a Saturday morning.
At 7:00 AM?
I'd say from 8:00 to 12:00. And then the, the date options are September 25th, October 2nd, and October 9th. We recognize that some of you will be busy, but would like to think we'd free you up by noon. We are more than willing to put the work and investment. It involves a lot of time and effort on behalf of the police officers. It's, it's added work for them if you're willing to commit. If you're not willing to commit, we'll put it off. But we don't want to do all the work and have one of you want to come versus most of you. So I see Councilmember Robati appears to be in.
So what do you get?
What do I get?
You get to learn all about your police department.
Do I get to ride the bike they don't allow me to ride?
So I can, I mean, there's, there's an overview that you would, you would learn about the, the mountain bikes, the motorcycles, the tactical response team, the K-9 unit, the, how they do traffic stops, all of the patrol procedures. You'd see the property and evidence, the crisis intervention team, how use of force is applied, how they search for buildings, how they investigate cases, family violence, emergency communications, how the department's structured, all of their accreditation, crime analysis, their field training program. A ride along with an officer would be an added, wouldn't be part of this Saturday session, but that would be part of the program.
It says September 25th, October.
Three weeks in a row, September 25th, October 2nd, October 9th.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Johnson, please.
I think this is a fantastic opportunity. Back-to-back Saturdays, I'm not sure. I can't commit tonight, I'd have to check my schedule, but I, I really think this is pretty cool. So, thank you.
I'd echo that. I think it's a fantastic opportunity to understand even more about the police department, so count me in. I think everyone will check their calendars and get back to you offline.
I'm sorry?
The fire department will come next.
We have talked to the fire department as well, that might be a spring activity to do something very similar. The, and then, sorry, one more. Just, I, I put this in news and notes, which you got shortly before the meeting today. Just want you to pay attention extra to it because you might hear from our, from our neighbors next week for Morrisville Carpenter Road project. There will be one day, Thursday or Friday, that they will be flagging and reducing traffic through our peak times. They have a significant part of the project, the gas relocation line. I think that they cannot get done between 9:00 and 4:00. So they're likely to start at 7:00 and may go beyond 4:00 o'clock. We have already started broadcasting that to the community. It's Thursday or Friday because it's weather dependent. Just want you aware, you might hear about that. And we'll be continuing to communicate, but wanted you to really be aware of that.
Next Thursday for any?
Next Thursday or Friday, I believe it's just the one day, just I'm not sure which one.
So direct people back to the website that has the most accurate information? Would that be what we do in response?
Lovely.
Yeah, it's probably not there today, but it will be on, on our Monday update. And I believe it'll be, it'll be part of the Monday calls. But because it's different, we've already started with this one this week.
The calls and the texts have been really great from our communications department, keeping our residents up to date on that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is the, is it the council's desire to take a quick break now or to go for another, what, 30 minutes?
Yeah, let's go, let's finish. He's been a poor guy.
Okay. We appreciate your patience, Mr. Glenn, Director of Communications, if you'd like to let us know some good news and how we're going to share it.
Certainly. As you said, Will Glenn, Communications and our Vice Director. Great to be with you all this evening. And of course, we are ecstatic and, and grateful to be designated as All-America City 2021. I want to thank you all publicly. So you all, you were a part of our delegation. The great video that you, that you did for us, although we had a small technical glitch the day of, it did get added into our, into the site, and so it was seen by others. So I want to thank you all publicly, as you were a part of our delegation, they received the award. So you may not know, but the, the last city to NC, I guess, city or town, locale, rather, to win the award was in 2020, was Pitt County. And prior to that, it was Charlotte in 2018. And between those five years, then Garner, as Brandon would know, got it in 2013. And between that, though, the next city, it's a long stretch, O'Reilly got it in 75. So I believe we are the third Wake County town or place to get the designation in 2021. So I just wanted to mention that, it's a very prestigious honor to be one of 10 places to get that designation this year. So now our task is to convert that into ROI for the town, that, that prestigious honor. I want to make this clear. So our, our timeframe we've decided on for implementation and I guess celebration is going to be on a fiscal year, so from now until next June. Whereas the honor doesn't end, so it's going to be chronicled in Morrisville history. It's kind of like when you win a, a Super Bowl or NCAA championship, they can't take the ring from you. So, so we're going to have that, of course, forever. And there'll be certain things which I'll go over inside our plan that are going to be more stationary or more permanent, that are going, going to last beyond, of course, June of next year. So I wanted to make that clear, what we're looking at and where we're approaching it. So one of the first things that, that we're tackling now and hoping to finalize this pretty soon here is deciding on if we want to handle this more in-house as far as developing a town-wide kind of implementation committee, or taking it outside and forming it out to a marketing firm who will kind of handle things for us. Just trying to really pinpoint what we're asking them to do to make that decision, if, if it makes sense, to kind of give that to someone external. Also knowing if that happens, we're going to have to be involved in any way to kind of direct them here and there. So we're trying to make that decision here in the next few days, if we're going to go kind of form it out or keep it internal. All right, so website, social and digital was, was really the first place that we kind of approached to put in our footprint for All-American City. As you are aware, we developed a signature for all, for all employees in council, of course, to use. Thank you all for implementing, I haven't seen everybody's email, but I'm thinking everybody has that on there. Thank you all for implementing. I haven't seen everybody's email, but I'm thinking everybody has that on their email. So thank you for having, doing that for us. We also implemented a, kind of a new landing page on most, if not all, of our social media sites. So our Facebook platform has a new kind of background there when you first go to it, um, that has the logo and some images there as well. We're in the midst of developing a, a static landing page on the website as well. Where we'll have things housed there as far as the application, um, the video of the delegation during the presentation, your video. Uh, our plaque presentation, video and photos of that, and also details of the projects that we allocated to during, during that. So we want to have that there as well, so folks can go to it and see just what the All-America City Award is and, and what it involves to actually get that designation. That's very important. And that should be in place by the end of the month here. We're shooting for on that. I want to also mention, I had our intern Connor kind of look at the other non places who, who received the designation, kind of see what they're doing. Just kind of put eyes on their digital platforms and, and I will say that, that we've done, I would say, more than each of them that we can see with our eyes to this point. So we're, we're not behind by any means. And, and again, this is something that's gonna be here forever. So you want to take a well-thought-out approach to getting them. I want to get done. All right, so advertising and media. Here's a place that we wanted to kind of partner with some of our, our local media. I say local, I mean the ones who are more, I guess, apparent in Morrisville and Cary. As far as Now on Eye Magazine, Cary Magazine, Cary Citizen, and also the Chamber to kind of, and I say partner. It'd be a chance for them to kind of get some ad placement, but for us to get some also, some, some FaceTime or whatever, FaceTime in their, um, in their, their items. Video, I want to mention our commemorative video that we're putting together as well. You may have seen the July 3rd event. We had a, um, video crew out there, kind of getting video, of course, of the plaque presentation. But also we asked them to go about and speak to some residents and kind of get some, um, some, some testimonials from residents of why Morrisville is a great place to live, work and play. They told me they got a few, but it was hard to get some folks to kind of talk on camera with them. You understand that? We're at a festive occasion. So we're hoping to put it together by August, so you will see yourselves in there on the stage during the, um, receiving the plaque, rather. Not specifically in, in other areas as well. We want to do some business spotlights, kind of branded that way. Give opportunities to, to say, so Morrisville is All-America City and highlight a business, say, here's another reason why type situation. And that'll be mostly on social media and also on some websites. So I want to do the same thing also with residents, and this will be a quarterly thing throughout the next year. To, to select some residents who've done some great things in our community and highlight them, some things they've done, and under the whole brand of All-America City. And that'll be, again, ongoing throughout the year. So signage, I think this is my favorite part of the whole award, um, the signage. And this would be more of, I guess, of more of the longstanding items and in some places maybe permanent items. We want to attach some signage to our, of course, our gateway signs. I think we have two of those in place now, right Martha, the gateway signs? Yeah, so we want to, we want to make it, make it look good and attractive, of course, when we place it there. Also, I'm sure you've seen other towns, NCDOT signage as well. That's gonna, you know, call some, some cooperation with them to get that signage there. Facility signs where it makes sense. And we're also discussing a town hall commemorative item that'll be up here. They may be more, more long-lasting. And we had a, I guess I mentioned this, we had a thought of maybe doing something near the roundabout, like on the, on the ground, maybe the logo. It's not a mural per se, but it could be kind of painted there on the ground, um, if we can put that in a nice place to go forward as well. All right, Town paraphernalia. Um, we have already put in place ordering some shirts. We're gonna do some T-shirts and also some polo shirts as well for our delegation and, and others to receive those. Other swag items. I put a picture of a lapel pin there. I'm actually talking with the National Civil League now to see if we can use that one. If, if you see, the logo there is slightly different, um, but it does entail, we have to use the, uh, our town name and the year, whatever we do, whatever we use the logo. So I'm asking if we can use that design over there to use our other design there. I haven't heard back from them yet. So, but we want to do, want to do some lapel pins with some image on that that you guys will be receiving pretty soon. Otherwise, I do want to mention, we'll probably get some swag items for contests on social media as well, maybe some, some cups or something nice that we can give away to our residents. It's gonna be a part of this as well. All right, in town property, I think this is one of my last one. Town property. We want to implement some vehicle branding, and, and the branding here, for the most part, would be on the front of the vehicles, maybe a, a plate or a license tag on the front. We thought that'd be cleaner than putting something on the actual vehicles themselves and easier to actually implement at that point. We've actually designed some business cars. We gotta tweak something small for residents, I mean, for employees and also for council. And where we can include that logo there. It may be a little different than what you have now. We will give you a chance to see those before we roll those out. And also a light pole banners. We, we have a chance to have 25 banners that will place on Town Hall Drive here also for the next year. That's all I had as far as our, our branding efforts. I will pause now for any questions that you may have from your end.
Does anyone have any questions for Director Glenn?
Concerns.
Councilmember Garamella.
Excellent presentation. When am I getting my polo shirt?
That, that'll be fairly soon. We actually finalized that order. I have your sizes for, I'm guessing your T-shirt size is the same as your polo size. So I have that. I'm just giving it over to the vendor now. We're getting that finalized, so pretty soon.
And, and so you said, this is like, uh, the signs will be there forever, right? Like, you know, if you go put on I-40, Marisol, so that will be in perpetuity. And is there a time limit? Then they say, take it away, or it, it is what it is now, right?
Yeah, I, I haven't actually had, put in the call to give the details of NCDOT yet. I don't believe there's a time limit where you take them away. It probably relies on the shape of the actual sign, if it, if it's in a, in good shape to, to remain there.
The reason I'm asking is, is this the ultimate award or do we have anything about that? Because tomorrow we might get a better award and then it's going back and, you know, changing all those afros and all the stuff. So, um, I'm just asking, is there like any?
Yes, well, I'm not sure of an award, I guess, at a higher level than this as far as nationally speaking at this point. I mean, there, there could be. Yeah.
I don't know, so I'm just asking. We don't want to go ahead and change.
All world, all universe. Yeah.
What is it?
Councilmember Robati followed by myself.
Yeah, I might have missed this. What's the cost of the signage and the business cards and the, um, is that already budgeted for? Because we didn't really know we were gonna win this.
Yeah, so I, I guess we did, we did catch a break there, kind of, sort of. So in the past, I would say pre-COVID, we would have been on site for the award. And we would have had to, you know, bring a whole delegation there as far as the, the community folks there presenting. So we did have money budgeted for that, and so we did recognize some cost savings there, but not having to go there and do it virtual. So we, we do have some money budgeted for those items at this point.
Great, thank you.
So let me, let me add just a little bit of technical clarification for, um, for this. So the money that Will is talking about, very true, was in last year's budget. So we, and you've done this before and you've seen this, we will be bringing one of those Cary over request items to bring it forward into this year so that he can use that money.
Okay. In mentioning the permanent signs, I know that Apex still has a sign saying that they're number one by Money Magazine, Apex One, and we're number 10. So I don't know if that might be something that we include in one of the signs somewhere around town. Also, we have a lot of small welcome to Morrisville signs, the ones with the M and the Live Connected, Live Well. I'd love if staff could bring back an option to maybe replace some of those with our logo on the left, All-America City on the right, with Live Connected, Live Well in the middle. Maybe All-America City above that, just a little bit larger, so people when driving by can read it. The big sign over by McCrimmon Corners, you can read the Live Connected, Live Well. The other ones, maybe not so much. So I'd appreciate, uh, knowing how much that would cost to replace some of those signs.
Noted.
And a lot, a lot of it is guided by what NCDOT will around Western.
Right. Councilmember Ralph, followed by Mayor Pretem Johnson, please.
Uh, just two questions. Excuse me. In terms of our branding, and maybe you already mentioned this, have we been also communicating these, our, our All-American City status to, you know, EDP NC North Carolina and Commerce and, you know, all the people that are promoting North Carolina and the governor's office so that, you know, they know that that's another feather in our cap, you know, for economic development, if a company wants to invest here?
Yeah, so we've put, we've put it out, I mean, I would say statewide or as far as media is involved. I do want to also, if I didn't mention this, work with the chamber to put it, other places with them as well. We actually can work with the places you're mentioning also.
Okay, and then, okay, great. And as a follow-up, uh, would you prefer using an outside marketing partner? Or do you, I mean, is that something that you, you need? Cause, or, or do you think it could be handled in-house?
I don't think I'm still kind of weighing. I'm kind of right in the middle of that, just trying to see which will make more sense for us at this point. And, and a part is making the RFP, just writing that down, opening statement, and just seeing what we're asking them to do. That's, that's what I'm working on now.
I'm fine with them as long as they're as good as you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Mayor Pretem Johnson.
So I just want to say thank you, Will. Thank you to you and your staff for heading this all up and obviously for, um, the success of, of this designation. I love the idea that you're gonna do this all fiscal year. I think, um, we need to be reminded, this is really important, and I keep saying it everywhere I go, how, um, how prestigious this is. And we all should be very proud of, of, of getting this designation. So I appreciate you taking the whole year to do it, and that, that'll be, um, hopefully it'll take, it might take your whole year to get to everybody too. Because we all, you know, not everybody reads 911, 919 magazine. Not everybody's on social media, so you gotta hit, and you know that. You've gotta hit all these areas to, to kind of get the message out. The only other thing I'm gonna say, I love the spotlights, the businesses and, and the residents in the community. And you say you're gonna do that quarterly?
Quarterly is the plan, yes.
Good, good. That's fabulous. So thank you again for all you did and, um, keep, keep, keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robati.
Just one more quick question, sorry. Um, is there, would you be taking nominations for who should be included in those business spotlights, resident spotlights? Or do you already have people in mind?
So we may use some businesses that we've used bef, well, not in the past, but one they used from, from our July 3rd event, for instance, trying to give them some spotlight. And, and others that were involved during COVID with us as well, but we haven't got them all figured out yet by any means.
So on behalf of the council and all the residents, thank you so much for leading the charge and making this happen. Personally, I think that this is a great opportunity for the communications department to develop ingrown talent, if you're willing to do it yourselves. And just tell us what you need to make it happen if you want to do it in-house and, and grow your team. And give you guys some excellent experience, uh, but it's up to you about what the best path forward is.
Good, thank you.
Okay. At this time, we are done with the agenda. Does, uh, Town Manager, do you have anything for the good of the order before we go into closed session? Okay, I'd like to thank everyone in the audience for watching this evening. We appreciate you taking the time to join us. As always, you can learn more about what's going on at www.townofmorrisfield.org. We're now going to go into closed session. We don't plan to have any public business afterwards, so we enjoy you joining us. And next Tuesday at 6:00 PM is our next meeting and opportunity to get in touch with us. And as always, please let us know what you're thinking and what you'd like to see us doing at town council@townofmorrisfield.org. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Make that motion. Oh, go ahead.
You have to read out the whole thing.
Read the whole thing. Okay, go ahead.
You can go ahead. Why don't you do the first one?
Sorry.
Wonderful. Do it. It's great.
All right, here I go.
Recognize Councilmember Robati.
I'm doing it. I make a motion that, um, we enter into closed session pursuant, pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A3 to discuss a matter of attorney-client privilege.
Okay, you want to do the second half, Councilmember Ralph?
Yeah, uh, pursuant to North Carolina statute, uh, 143.318.11A4, a move that we go into closed session for economic development. And pursuant to, um, 143.318.5, we go to closed session to discuss real property acquisition matter.
And I'm realizing now, can I have two different council members make a motion like that? Is that okay?
But I'll do them separately, but that's fine.
Okay, can I have a second for Councilmember Robati's motion, please?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor of, oh, do we have to do a, um, roll call vote to go into that closed session? Since it's just, okay, all those in favor of going closed session on that first item, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Listening for Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
I was typing, sorry. Aye.
Thank you. Uh, that passes unanimously. Can I have a second for the second motion, please?
I'll second that too.
And you'll second that as well. All those in favor of the second motion, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And I heard Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, that also passes unanimously. It is 7:47. We're gonna take a 13-minute break. Reconvene at 8:00 PM for our closed session. Thank you all.